This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the Town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, North Haven residents. My name is Stacy Yarver, and I'm the town clerk for the Town of North Haven. Pursuant to the Town of North Haven's charter, Chapter 9, Section 903, the Town of North Haven Special Town Meeting will now come to order. Excuse me. Before we can proceed with the actual meeting, we do need to elect a moderator. The moderator is nominated and elected by the members of this meeting. It is the moderator's function to bring before the meeting all items of the warning and to assist in obtaining the objective of the meeting. And also, the moderator helps ensure all the rights of the individual voters who wish to be heard. Lastly, the moderator's duties include helping any member of the meeting who seeks clarification or to advise them with regard to parliamentary procedure. When it is time to vote on the moderator in any issue that comes before this town meeting tonight, please remember to be able to vote, one must be an elector. To be an elector of our town, one must have been a registered voter in the town at the time of the most recent election or one who pays taxes to the town on an assessment of property of not less than $1,000 on the most recent grant list assessment day, as well as a citizen of the United States and 18 years of age or older. This regulation will be enforced for all votes taken this evening. If you're unsure if you're an elector for the town, I have my handy-dandy voter registry right up here, and I can check your status. Now, the floor is open for nominations for the meeting moderator. Are there any nominations?
We would like to nominate Teresa Ranciatovili.
Is there any seconds?
Second.
All righty. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will now put this issue to a vote. All in favor of Teresa Ranciatovili as a special town moderator, special town meeting moderator, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Any abstentions? And now declare Teresa Ranciatovili as the moderator of tonight's meeting. Good evening, Madam Moderator.
Good evening, everybody. Okay. My name is Teresa Ranciatovili. And we will begin. The town clerk will now read the warning call of tonight's special town meeting.
Thank you. A special town meeting of the electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of the Town of North Haven, Connecticut, will be held on Monday, November 21, 2022, at 6:30 PM in the upstairs conference room of the North Haven Memorial Town Hall, 18 Church Street, North Haven, Connecticut, for the following purpose: to consider and act upon a resolution by the Board of Selectmen recommending to the town meeting the waiver of the town's conditional right to repurchase the real property known as 88 Bassett Road, said right being set forth in the deed from the town to the state of Connecticut dated December 17, 1985. This notice was dated at North Haven, Connecticut, on the 3rd of November, 2022.
Thank you. The town clerk will now read our only item of the night, Agenda Item Number 1.
Agenda Item Number 1. To consider and act upon a resolution of the Board of Selectmen recommending to the town meeting the waiver of the town's conditional right to repurchase the real property known as 88 Bassett Road, said right being set forth in the deed from the town to the state of Connecticut dated December 17, 1985.
Resolve that in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, the town does hereby waive its conditional right to repurchase the real property known as 88 Bassett Road, said right being set forth in the deed from the town to the state of Connecticut dated December 17, 1985. Is there a second?
One second.
We now come to the point of the meeting where we open the floor for discussion for this agenda item. The rules are fairly simple. Anyone who wishes to speak will get a chance to comment before anyone will be called a second time. You need to come forward to the microphone, state your name and address. Discussion is limited to this item at this time. Please limit your questions and discussions to no longer to five to 10 minutes, and if you want to speak again, you may after everyone else has had the opportunity. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Valerie Goodkin.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I am here tonight to read a statement on behalf of Mr. Frida. He expresses his apologies for not being able to attend this evening as he is still contending with the effects and symptoms of having tested positive for COVID-19 virus. He is writing to you tonight to offer his opinion that the town should not exercise its right of first refusal to purchase the property at 88 Bassett Road in which ACES currently resides. The state, through Special Act 2133, has agreed to convey the property to ACES for ACES' use for educational purposes. He is recommending this for several reasons. One, the town really has no current use for the property, and it would not be prudent to bond for the acquisition of property the town has no use for. Two, the town still has an easement to use the fields for recreational purposes. Three, the town's assessor estimates the value of just the building at $12,900,000. If the town were to purchase the building, the town would also be required, as the owner, to spend a significant amount of additional money in renovations and remediation to get the building up to modern-day standards and modern-day code. This expense could potentially be millions more of additional dollars in addition to the purchase price. Equally important, Mr. Frida continues to support the ACES' mission here in town in helping children with intellectual disabilities and helping provide their families provide such an outstanding resource for their children. He is sure that you will hear more from ACES tonight regarding their interest in purchasing the school from the state and how that purchase would allow them to expand their educational services into adding additional resources that include the very important area of adding special education resources into the facility on Bassett Road. Item 6, Special Act 2123 contains protection for the town in the event that ACES does not use the property for educational purposes or if ACES sells or leases all or any portion of the property. It is for all of these reasons that Mr. Frida proposes the town does not exercise its first right of refusal to purchase the building and to allow ACES to purchase the building from the state of Connecticut. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight to Agenda Item 1? Mr. Sharkey?
Good evening. My name is Brendan Sharkey. I am an attorney here representing ACES. And with me this evening also to answer questions is Tim Gunn, our, the ACES Director of Facilities and Construction. Right? I got the title right. Okay. So, thank you for being here this evening. To give you a little bit of background as to how, excuse me, how this came about. As you all know, when the property was sold from Orchard Hill Middle School to the state of Connecticut, it was used as the Gateway Community College North Haven Campus. The Gateway use of the property was, for the entire building, discontinued about five or six years ago, as I recall, though they have retained an automotive repair shop, specialty shop that's physically in the building. And when Gateway moved out of the North Haven Campus, they leased the property to ACES as a location for ACES Magnet School, the Wintergreen Magnet School. And it was a pretty good fit and a good relationship between the two. But about two years ago, discussions began about the state of Connecticut actually selling the property to ACES for other potential uses. I can tell you from my own discussions with folks at the Board of Regents for the state college system, this is somewhat of a white elephant to the state. It's a facility that has aged over the time that they've, the state has had it. They've tended to waive their own requirements or the state requirements for keeping the building to code. They've deferred a lot of maintenance over time. And at this point, given the tight budgets that the Board of Regents is experiencing, this is really an albat- I'm mixing my metaphors, but it's actually an albatross for them financially. So they've been very anxious to sell the property, subject to the town, to the town's cooperation and the town's input. So the discussions occurred between the Board of Regents and ACES. ACES was interested in the property because they have an interest now in consolidating other special education programs at this facility, moving the Wintergreen Magnet School back to its original location in Hamden. But then also enhancing the existing programs that they're consolidating at the building to include additional programs for disabled children, children with intellectual disabilities, children on the spectrum, and other programs that would be expanded as a result of being able to access this entire facility. So those conversations began around late 2020. And there were a couple of ways for the state to consider conveying the property to ACES. One could have been for the state to make use of an existing procedure that's available between and among state agencies. ACES technically is a quasi-state agency. So we could have pursued that avenue, subject to town approval and the town waiving any interest of its own. But in fact, what was thought at the time to be a more expeditious way of handling this was to go to the state legislature and follow the statutory conveyance process for state properties. That involves a legislative committee in Hartford, hearing and taking up bills around conveyances of specific properties, holding public hearings on that, seeking input from the public, including the town. And that, in fact, happened in the 2021 legislative session. At that time, the town had indicated that it was not interested in purchasing the property, as we've heard from Mr. Frida. And the result was, actually, just for the record, I wanted to correct, it's actually Special Act 2133-33. That special act authorizes the conveyance of the entire parcel to ACES, but subject to several conditions, a few of which Valerie had already described as far as what ACES can use the property for. One of the other conditions is that ACES enter into an operating agreement with the Board of Regents to maintain that auto-repair facility at Gateway, or at the former Gateway, until the state of Connecticut and Gateway actually move that to another location, which is still to be decided where that will go. And then third, and probably most importantly to the town, the act, the legislative act, actually requires that there be a separate easement granted to the town for the use of the recreational fields. So that would convey to the town exclusive right to the fields for its own use. So that was, I know, the biggest concern that the town had because obviously those fields are very popular and are used by the town's sports programs. And everybody wanted to make sure that that was retained for the town. And that is, in fact, the way this is going to transpire. So the reason, so everything's on board. And, you know, we've, that operating agreement has been negotiated. The deed has been drafted. We're ready to go. And in order to accomplish this transaction, ACES needs to get a school construction grant to upgrade the building, obviously, and bring it to code. There's only one problem. Everybody's on board. Everybody's ready to go. But there's one issue that popped up that the, actually, the Attorney General's Office first pointed out in the course of the negotiation and also, Town Attorney Dinoffrio also raised, which is the fact that in the deed that conveyed the property from the town to the state back in 1985, the town wisely reserved to itself a right to purchase the property if the state of Connecticut conveyed the property to anyone for a use that was other than secondary education. It's a very precise language. So if the state of Connecticut conveyed the property to Quinnipiac University, let's say, we wouldn't be here tonight. But because the property instead is being conveyed to ACES, which is a K through 12 education, that doesn't satisfy the condition of the deed. It gives the town the ability and the right to acquire the property back from the state, if that's the intention. And it requires, according to the town attorney, this special meeting to determine that the town is not, in fact, interested, and it is, in fact, waiving its right under the deed to acquire the property. So that's why we're here tonight. And we're happy to answer any other questions. We hope you support it. I think everyone's on board with it. But if you have any questions, obviously, we're here to answer them.
Well, stay there for a minute. Is there anyone out there who wants to ask any questions of Mr. Sharkey? Okay. So, yeah, come on up. This is Third Selectman Sally Buemi.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Moderator, Town Clerk. Sally Buemi, 5 Blossom Drive. In preparation for this special town meeting, I was at the town clerk's office today. As you know, Stacy, I saw you there. And I got myself a copy of the deed in question. And again, I'm a little discouraged that there's no town attorney here. I keep asking this during special town meetings. If we have legal issues, why do we not have the town attorney here? I understand.
Can I explain?
Sure.
The town attorney did want to come tonight. He has a conflict. He is going to come here immediately, following where he is now. So if there's an underlying question that we really need answered, if we could just stall a little bit, hopefully, he'll get here and answer.
My name is Sally.
I'll sing for you, okay?
Slow down.
I think that was a taxi episode when he was trying to take the driver's s. What do you do out of a yellow light? Slow down. No. But item 5 in the deed is that question here. And it, this is a restriction which runs with the land, and it inures to the benefit of the grantor, and it is binding on the grantee, which in this deed is the state of Connecticut and its successors and assigns, which in this case would be ACES as a successor owner, correct?
Correct.
So, so we're not, and it says that, as far as the restriction, it shall not, as you stated, it shall not be used for any purpose other than non-residential post-secondary school educational uses. And of course, ACES will not comply with that because they're K through 12. First and foremost, let me say, we all love ACES. We all support its mission. It's a very important role in our society, and it meets an essential need in addressing the issues faced by children with learning disabilities. So I believe that is why the Board, certainly why I, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, recommended that this be placed before the legislative body for consideration. But I did talk at that Board of Selectmen meeting that I wanted to do a little bit more research on it because I had just heard about it at first blush that night. So we're not changing anything about, we're not changing that language, I don't think we can, about the restriction on the use. What we're doing is we're waiving our right to repurchase. And that right to repurchase only clicks in, if I read this correctly, in the event that the grantee or its successors and assigned should use the premises for any other purpose.
That's correct.
That's correct. Good. So I read this correctly. So we're not changing the restriction on the use. What we're deciding here tonight is whether we want to waive our right to repurchase. And I agree with many of the statements or positions of the First Selectmen that Val read into the record. But, so my question is, is this waiver only for this transaction? Well, if you guys sell it down the line to somebody, will we still have that right to repurchase?
Okay, I'm gonna, do you have any more questions? Or I'll ask Mr. Sharkey to get up and, I'll ask him to get up and answer that first, and then you can continue asking questions. How about that?
Sure. Well, I'll make my closing comment, perhaps based on his answer and how I feel about this whole thing.
Perfect, okay.
But do you understand?
I do.
And do you feel it's a meritorious question?
I do.
Then excellent.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, you can just stay there, Sally. Okay? Yes, Mr. Sharkey?
Okay, sure. You've outed me, Madam Selectmen, because you can, now you know why it was that I took such a long time explaining the transaction. Because I was actually waiting for Attorney Dinoffrio to appear tonight. So I thought I'd kind of string things out a little bit. The answer to your question is that the special act is actually what will drive everything forward in terms of what ACES is allowed to do with the property going forward.
Yes, I listened very carefully to your description of the act. Are you saying the special act will usurp the language of the deed?
Okay, wait, we can't do the back and forth for the, okay.
Yeah, to clarify. The special act limits, I'll just, without reading it necessarily verbatim, well, "ACES shall use said parcel of land for purposes of a magnet school or other educational purposes. And if ACES, A, does not use said parcel for either of said purposes, B, does not retain ownership of all of the parcel, or C, leases any portion of the parcel, the parcel shall revert to the state of Connecticut."
Oh, okay.
So it would not necessarily be a right of first refusal for the town to buy it back if the ACES violates it. It will automatically revert back to the state of Connecticut, at which time the state would have to renegotiate with another party, to such as the town, to acquire it. So that is the restriction that's going to be the compelling reason for why I think the town is secured, that ACES cannot sell this to a third party or do anything with the property other than what its intended use is. And from that point, the town is protected. If that answers your question.
So Selectman Buemi, would you like to come back up now?
Yes. Yes, that's very helpful. So there's a reverter clause back to the state because that was my concern. Because when you, when you were describing this deed in your original presentation, you said the town wisely reserved the right to repurchase. And I agree with that. And it begs the question, why? Was that a smart thing to do? And should we waive it? But, because what you're worried about is what a successor will do, and we know now what you do. And I've already stated, we all support what ACES will be doing with the premises. But you guys might sell it to somebody, and then what happens? So now you've answered my question that that cannot happen.
That's correct.
So is it, would you qualify that as a restraint on alienation? There's a reverter, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
She doesn't want us going back and forth.
Right, I really can't have you going back and forth.
Okay, but, so you're saying, if I understand your answer to my concern is that if ACES does not comply with the specific terms of the public act, this property will revert back to the state. And so then my next question would be, okay, now the state owns it again, and if they sell it to someone else, will we still have our right to repurchase? Which leads me to my original question. Are we waiving that right to repurchase for just this transaction or forever?
Okay, you can get back up and answer that now, Mr. Sharkey.
Okay. The answer to that is that if we, if ACES violates the terms of the special act, as you've said, the property will revert back to the state. And at that point, the town is protected by virtue of the statutory limits on what the state of Connecticut can do with properties going forward. It basically is a status quo ante, just as we are now. And the state statutes always, and it's embedded in the statute, that the state cannot convey any state property without first consulting the town. Even to other agencies, other state agencies. They must consult the town. So the town will always have the ability to acquire the property back if it goes back to the state. What this special act does is prevent ACES from selling it to a third party without the town's knowledge or permission.
Okay.
Okay, so my final, excuse me, my final comment. So if it reverts back to the state, you say they have, the town will have a right to be consulted. Well, that's great. And the state statute provides that right of consultation. But that's far different from a right to repurchase, isn't it?
It is. I'm sorry, I misused the phrase. They, the town would have, I'm sorry.
Yeah, come on. So is that, all right. So the question is, while the town is consulted?
Consulting is not the right word to use. The town has, always has the right, the first right of refusal, to purchase state property when it's being considered for conveyance. So that's always the case. The town can always purchase the property if it chooses to. You'll be consulted as to whether you're interested in acquiring, but not, but there is a right of first refusal in the town to acquire.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator, I'm sorry for this back and forth, but each response of his inspired a different question for me.
Well, it's luckily not a busy night for us tonight.
Yes, everybody else.
I think the audience will forgive us.
So I feel confident in those answers. I would urge the other two people here at this town meeting who can vote besides myself to vote in favor of the town, if I'm getting the language correctly. We are waiving, according to the agenda, it's, the motion is to waive the right to repurchase, correct?
Yes, waive the conditional right to repurchase.
Yes. So I feel I've done my due diligence in looking into the issue. I'm satisfied with the questions, and I feel the town is protected in why we originally reserved this right in the first place. And so I urge this legislative body to vote in favor of the motion. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for all of those questions and points because I think you helped clarify it for everybody watching it out there. I mean, it's important for everybody to understand because I know how old that building is because I attended that school.
So did I.
Okay, so I think we are going to ask if there's anyone else who would like to speak tonight. Yes, Mr. Piper.
Bill Piper, 28 Bassett Road, North Haven, Connecticut. And I wanted to thank, you know, Sally for bringing up a very good point. You know, just to clarify, and I think it's great that the property will continue for educational purposes with a very good organization in terms of ACES, that the fields, and I live just down the road from the property on Bassett Road, that the fields will continue to be open and used by the town. And I think the, you know, the point that- And I think the, you know, the point that I think Sally made and that Mr. Sharkey just clarified is that, you know, the property will stay educational for the foreseeable future, and even if it doesn't, then there's still recourse back to the town. So I think I definitely also agree that this is in the best interest of, you know, continuing the property for a very good cause and in the best interest of the town. So I also support it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Selectman Piper. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Okay. Seeing no hands, I don't think we need to call the question. So I think we can vote directly on the resolution. All in favor of Agenda Item One, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Signify by saying nay. Okay, the motion passes. And as there is no further business to be considered at this special town meeting, I hereby declare tonight's special town meeting adjourned. The minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public by the town clerk as soon as possible. And the meeting is ending at--
7:05.
7:05. Thank you. Good night.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from-- The town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.
When are you, uh, when are you building your house?
We're building it now.
Oh, you are? Awesome.
We started. Oh, yeah, I have to ask you a question.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome. I'm gonna stop in tomorrow and talk, because I have a bill that I got for my sewer use something.
I don't collect receipts.
Yeah, no, I said I'd stop in anyway, but I'll talk to you about it.
Okay.